And Patty, would you please roll call?
Dan.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Don.
Here.
John.
Here. At this time, I'd like to ask for any financial, financial conflict of interest?
I have none.
We have none.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
Uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chair, do you want to do just like a county up, uh, commissioner update at like ten A? It's a quick one. Or do, we could do it after public comment too.
I think we could do that anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think you have to put it on the.
I move to approve the.
Second.
About motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve the.
Agenda.
Agenda as stated, all in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. At this time, let, uh, look for public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individuals, organization or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeit of remaining speaking time. Are there any one here for a couple of public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. We have advertised budget supplement. Is the next item on the agenda?
Does that, Patty, does that have to be at one oh five?
Yep.
Uh, maybe we could go on to the urban boundary one and come back.
Certainly, sure. Certain. Moving on to the FHA, the federal highway departments, urban boundary map. And that has been presented to all of us and um, are there any questions or discussion on that?
I got a question and it looks like you, you worked with him to add a big chunk of the lake.
Yes.
I really appreciate that because your point that you made is that's one of the fastest growing area in the whole county and it seemed foolish not to include that. So I really appreciate.
Yeah.
Your work on that, Ryan.
Yeah, and yeah, and the, to doubles on on the fact that it only gets adjusted every 10 years.
Yeah.
So it was a definitely way overdue to get that in there.
Are you happy with these changes?
Yeah, I've worked with them too because we couldn't add more to the west beyond that point. Um, they like to try to keep it a little tighter and so we kind of went back and forth with a few maps and then, um, settled on this one.
I, I think this is a good move and then it allows the possibility of maybe some other grants or other opportunities. So it's a real positive thing and appreciate your work on that. And I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
With the, uh, with the new changes.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda. Any further discussion? Uh, further discussion, the only thing I wanna, I'd, I'd like to say is with, with the addition of the lake area, that does not mean that the city has approved any other changes other than what has been designated for the city. So.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and we saw rather, uh, through the struggle that this boundary is not the same as the municipal, what's in the municipality. So.
Correct. Have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
I would move to approve, approve the 2023 year end claims.
I have a motion by Wanda to approve the 2023 year end claims and I have a second by Ryan to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, let's go back to the budget supplement.
Okay, uh, we're going to move back to item number five, uh, the advertised budget supplement.
And these are advertised in the paper for, uh, the rural access. Uh, for the highways. Oh, it's not for the highway, it's for the rave, it's called. For two hundred fifteen thousand and for the court fund, a hundred ninety-five thousand.
Yeah, and I'd just point out that that's a hundred and ninety-five thousand more, more for the courts than we had budgeted for. Is that correct, Patty?
Yes.
And that, that's just important for the community to realize how busy our court system and state's attorney and sheriff's office is that we're a hundred and ninety-five thousand more than we budgeted for and we're forecasting that's going to continue to go up. Go ahead, Wanda.
And a good portion of that is indigent defense.
Yeah.
Court-appointed attorneys, translators and ju, and unfortunately, uh, juvenile, juveniles and juvenile delinquents.
And almost without exception, all unfunded mandates on the county that we have no control over and really no ability to forecast the costs on and that's a direct reason why property taxes are increasing. So.
Even though we get a very small percentage.
Yeah, just wanted to make that point. So.
And we move on to the continued contingency transfers.
Don't we have to move it and vote?
Motion to approve the, uh, advertised budget supplement.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Wanda.
I got.
Any further discussion?
Yes. Let's go to page seventeen. That's the county jail. And I'm not understanding that.
On the claim.
Hundred and twenty-one thousand payroll. When it's on them and not on all the others or some of the others. What's the deal there?
Is that on the budget supplement or is that on?
Contingency transfers. I just didn't put it on there.
I'm sorry, Patty, what did you say?
I just didn't put it on there. I.
You didn't put what on there?
The payroll on the other.
Oh. Okay. And so that's the end of the month payroll?
Yep, yes.
Or.
Okay. Okay, I, in, in this area, I'd like to have some discussion. I, I see there's a, you know, a, a, a number, a large number of departments that, um, were over. And they needed supplements. Uh, and that relates to the general fund then, right?
Yes.
Okay, so what I would like to have, uh, is a discussion at our next meeting uh, to discuss, uh, what the county really did. And, and the way, the way I would have done it in, in my previous, uh, uh, jobs would, I would, I started out with a year end, uh, balance in the budget. I'd add all the, uh, accounts payable to that number. Subtract accounts receivable from that number. Look for any major inventory increase or decrease in, in some of the departments like if, if the, uh, highway department laid in a bunch of gravel. Uh, and they didn't have a bunch of gravel a year ago, then it makes sense to give them credit for that. But we don't know, we don't know from what we look at. What the county, or I guess I don't know, I shouldn't say we, I don't know from what uh, I look at what the county really did. And I'll go back to a meeting, uh, a fair time ago when Sherry Loest, uh, brought up the suggestion that, uh, I guess we, we should be doing about the same thing. And that's analyze what really happened, profit or loss, not borrowing money from the general fund.
Uh, which, which, I'm seeing there's only two departments that are over the jail and emergency management. That, is that accurate, Patty, that?
And I think mine and the treasurer and, and a lot of that had to do with the increase in, in, uh, health insurance.
Yeah.
And we didn't budget for it.
Yeah, no, that, and that.
Or we budgeted for not that.
That's all explainable.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
But that's, that's what the public needs to know and understand that, you know, everything isn't over budget. It's.
Yeah.
Cause we, we had to do our budget last year, not knowing what the increases for insurance were. It's, but yeah, I agree with you, Don. That makes sense.
Yeah, and I'd like to do it, uh, you know, a, a little deeper dive into each of the departments, uh, to see how closely they follow their budget. Uh, I just think, uh, there was a significant drop in the general fund a year or two ago. And I think we need, we need to be wary of that.
Doesn't that show up in year-to-date actual?
I don't know.
Well, it's on current budget, current period, year-to-date actual. Would seem to be a.
You have to have a starting point and an ending point and you have to, uh, adjust for accounts payable and accounts receivable to come up with what really happened to your financial position during the year in that general fund.
I, I, I get that. But the, the deep dive should, would that be, not be reflected in what they've spent year-to-date? And if they're over, pick on those particular departments and say, are you not over?
That would be, uh, that would be all right, but we needed a description, for example, with uh, the highway department, the two hundred and fourteen thousand that they were over, what did that go for? Where did that go? What, what, you know?
I get that and I think Mr. Solochek could probably come in and tell us.
So, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Maybe, maybe we should have our department heads here at this meeting, the end of the year meeting.
Well, I, Ms. Chair, I'd, I'd suggest maybe a, a special meeting at the end of January or, you know, with, with Don, with Don's experience, which is huge. I'd be willing to work with him and maybe we explore this a little, a little more and, and give a report back because, I mean, yeah, Don, who's got more experience than him?
To have a accurate, uh, analysis of it.
Yeah.
You really know, need to know what bills on January one were twenty twenty-four bills.
Yep.
And which were twenty-three.
Yep.
And what were twenty-three too?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So.
I think you and I, to remember, scarily are on the same page.
That things go up too. You know?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, I don't think the departments intentionally go over their budget.
But that's what we have to, that's our responsibility as a commission to be aware of what's going on. Uh, that's the way I look at it. And if, if it's all in, uh, uh, insurance and we approved an insurance plan, then we expect it to go up.
Yep.
But if somebody's spending a ton of money on miscellaneous.
Are you suggesting that we not have the same problem that they had in peer with car titles and Department of Social Services and delinquent children embezzlement?
I don't think about that.
I don't, I don't think that's a suggestion at all, but I do agree that, that maybe Dan and, Dan and Don have, have, uh, offered to, to take a look at, at all of the expenditures for the year. And I think that's a great idea to go to work and say, hey, if you're, if you're under budget by this, what, what did you do so that we can move this forward? Or if you're over budget, why did you extend more than what was budgeted? And then we can figure out what we need to do in the future or they need to, their department heads need to figure out what they need to do in the future so they're not going over budget.
Hmm.
Uh, I, I think that's a great idea to, to do a kind of a synopsis on what's, what's happening and, and come back in January, the end of January and report back to us and say, hey, uh, this all looks, looks good and, and we have no, no questions anymore. And let's just move forward for another year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
But I just want you, you know, to remember that, uh, you know, things come up that you don't normally and don't anticipate.
Yeah, like, like the court, it's impossible to predict what.
Exactly.
It, who, you know, who would have thought like this year, somebody would do what they did at the school and I guarantee you, how much is that going to cost us? A, a huge amount, yeah.
Yeah, and we need to keep those things in mind when we, when we, uh, do our budget and.
Yep, exactly, exactly right. Uh, I believe we have a motion in a second on the.
Yep.
The. Good discussion. I made the motion.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to approve the contingency transfers.
We may, we may not be able to have that done till the end of February.
Yeah, I believe we're on, uh, budget supplements still, Mr.
Budget supplements, I'm sorry. Yes, we did move back up to that. So. So I have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to approve the advertised budget supplements. We had discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
I would make a motion to, uh, approve the contingency transfer budget, budgeted cash transfer.
That's separate. The budgeted cash transfer.
So you want two motions?
Yes, please.
All right, then I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the contingent, contingency transfers.
I have a motion by Wanda. Can I get a second on the contingency transfers?
Second.
Second by Ryan. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor to approve the contingency transfers and all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Now can I get a budget or a motion, the budgeted cash transfer?
And this is for the pooled cash for the highway department and emergency management.
Um, motion to approve.
Second, motion by Dan, second by Ryan to approve the budgeted cash transfer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the assigned dollars. Patty, you want to?
And this is, um.
This is the bond forfeiture money.
The bond forfeiture and then also, uh, the ambulance department received CPR dollars. And they wanted that assigned for them to spend this money for CPR supplies for the next year.
I think that that should be two motions, one for the emergency management, one for these, uh, bond forfeitures. And as I stated last time at the last meeting, uh, I would recommend and move that the bond forfeitures that occur in criminal court, when typically a, an individual defendant fails to show up for court, that those bond forfeiture monies be, uh, allowed to be used by the state's attorney's office, provided that they're earmarked for truancy and youthful adult diversion programs.
I'll second Wanda's motion.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve the assigned dollars for the bond forfeitures. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, uh, opposed, nay? Motion carries. Second part of that motion is for.
The CPR dollars.
CPR dollars for the ambulance service.
And then is that, what is that, a grant or is that just more like?
Yeah, it's just them paying for the CPR classes.
Okay, is that, are we getting a grant or is that coming out of the budget or what?
No.
That's people paying for their classes.
It's money we've, we've received.
And how, how much is that? And just.
Like, uh, so far they've got like six thousand three hundred and thirty dollars.
Okay, and do we know what the cost of those classes are versus what we're paying? And the reason I ask that is we're so, so short on EMTs and paramedics and we're talking about six thousand. Would it almost be better if we?
I don't think that we pay anything. I think Eric puts those classes.
I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud here, maybe this isn't the time to do it for, for that amount of money. Would we al- almost be better if we just didn't charge for it? And have more first responders in the community? Just thinking out loud here.
Didn't, when Eric was here the last time, didn't he indicate that they were trying to get more?
I believe he did, yeah.
Folks qualified.
Yeah.
And I, I'm assuming that those classes are not free.
Yeah, I do believe he's very good at looking at grants and stuff and, and I'm, I'm fine with moving forward this on today, but having more EMTs and, and medical, uh, responders in our fire department and our ambulance in our community in general is well worth it. But I'm fine with moving forward with this today. So.
Get a motion to approve the transfer of those funds?
So moved.
Second, motion by Dan, second by Ryan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Uh, opposed, nay? Motion carries. Prove the county wage matrix. Basically, that's the matrix, the, the, the wage matrix.
Cost of living.
The cost of living increase of four point two percent. That's respect reflected in, on the sheets in front of you. So like to have a motion to approve that.
Dan, just one second, isn't that, those were factored into the budget by the department? That's correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Then I would move to approve the county wage matrix at four point two percent.
A motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to approve the wage matrix. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Rental agreement, uh, from the nurses, state nurses, uh, for the rental of the property in the lower level of this facility, um. The only thing that I see is the, in the contract, they, the state would like to have a five-year, um, rental agreement. I would like to change that and I did send that contract to, to Tyler and to Rob and, um, I'd like to have them change that or if, if they have, if I could send it to you, just change it from the five-year to the one-year, year after year and move forward with that at this point in time.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I would agree with you a hundred percent is that, you know, the state doesn't do us any favors and we recall why we're in this situation is they on their own basically canceled their contract and their agreement with us. And I, I guess I would, I, I'm fine with the one-year agreement, but I also believe we should look at increasing that. Uh, we'd pay fifteen hundred dollars a month. Now I think we should ask for two thousand, um, because our cost to our building isn't increasing. Whenever the state does anything for us, it's money, money, money. And why are we doing things basically for free for the state?
Doesn't she only come like one day?
No, they're, they're down there every, every day, uh.
The, the WIC program is there every day.
Oh, okay.
And the state rents the facility or the area for WIC program and then the, the state nurse comes once a day or by appointment only, I guess, is what my.
Does anybody know, has, has the, uh, lady from, the nurse from Tindall even been here yet? Because when they, well, when they came, uh, they said she's going to be here every month and they came what, three or four months? Well, has she been here yet? Well, not yet. Okay, that was four months that she hadn't been here. Does anybody know?
Does that rental agreement include an annual increase?
It does not at this time.
It's such as the cost of living increase that we just granted.
Should. I mean, look what the state's doing to us with VSOs costing us, that's four thousand dollars more right there. Did they talk to us about it or did they just say, we're not paying you? And, and why is the state doing it? Because their funds are short. Well, our funds are short too. And so I guess I'd move for, uh, annual uh, agreement, not, not five years. And I'd set the price at two thousand dollars a month. And if they don't like it, they can take their office, which they're responsible for and go find another place. It's not like we can't use the space here for our other departments. And so I guess that's where I'd like to be.
What are they paying now per month?
Fifteen hundred.
The county responsible for.
No.
From what I've heard, there are a lot of counties who, who don't even have a nurse's office.
We are, we are not responsible to, to provide them with space.
Yeah, and, and, and to that, to that point, but it was, go ahead, Ms.
But I don't want our constituent, I don't have a problem with the one year and I don't have a problem with increasing the, the rent. But I don't want our constituents to think that it's the county's, um, process to eliminate that service from, from taking place.
I don't think it is and it was pretty clear last year when the state on their own accord just decided that we weren't going to have a, a, a nurse for healthcare anymore. And they didn't consult us and they just went ahead and did it. And, uh, a- again, that, that is not a free service to us. Our, our property tax goes to maintain that electricity, um, cleaning and all that. It's not free. And I think with the state's seven billion dollar budget, they can afford to pay the cost so that it's net neutral to the county.
Back in the day, didn't the, the county nurse do immunizations and baby well checks? Aren't those all done at the clinics now?
I would say the, the majority, all that's happening down there from what I recall is, is, is WIC.
And, and supposedly there's a nurse that comes over here by appointment.
Does anybody, has that ever happened? I, I, I've never heard of that happening. It was supposed, you remember they all sat here and they promised us that was going to happen and then that, this is really a case of, of the, the state failing to hold up their end of the bargain for our constituents. And so that's where I'm at, my motion, one year. Of course they want five years. Cause they don't want free.
I told you.
And of course they want it, want it for free, but I guess look at what they're doing to our VSOs. Look at, I was going to bring it up later, but I'll bring it up now. They're trying to charge us for their parolee's medical care. So when somebody gets out of state prison early and it saves the state money, now they want us to pay for their healthcare when they're in our jail. I mean, the, the.
Well, and that's also because we have a trustee unit here that, lucky us.
And, and the, the state thinks somehow they're saving prop, they're saving tax dollars by dumping things onto the county. And all it really does is increase the locals' property tax. And I just don't think that's fair and um, so I guess that's my motion. We'll see where it goes.
Second.
Hey, I have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda.
I, uh, I was gonna just reiterate, I do support the one year too as well and, and I think the, uh, the, uh, increase there should be some increase.
Exactly.
And, but I, I support the one year as doubly because we have down there in the, in the basement right now, it's, everything seems to be a little bit in flux, especially with uh, contact center, kind of looking to move someplace and stuff like that. So we don't want to commit to a five-year office down there. One year, one year is much more suitable for what's going on right here, right now. So.
What was your final motion?
Um, one-year agreement only and then I, we're at fifteen hundred dollars a month. And I think that needs to be increased to two thousand dollars a month because our costs are increasing. And, uh, I think that's fair and I guess if the state doesn't like it, they can go somewhere else with their office.
Guys are approving a one.
Nope, nope, not yet. I have a motion by Dan. I have a second by Wanda to approve to, to contract being one year and a rental increase to two thousand dollars per month. Any further discussion on that motion?
Well, it, it, is, is this significantly different, uh, than the four H?
Than the what?
Yes, yes.
What we're doing for four H?
Yes.
Oh, four H.
Oh, is that different?
Well, I think they're all going to mesh together potentially.
I think that's, we own that bill. I think that's, we own that building and that is a, four H is a county department. Where this is a state obligation, where we had supported them until they, I, I'm, for the lack of a better term, until the state abandoned the counties, which they did a year ago. And then we pulled our support, um, and our two employees from that office. And, uh, so I guess that's where I think it's different.
My understanding is, is this is, this is totally separate from the four H because the state is, basically all we're doing is renting space out of this facility. If, if the state doesn't like this agreement, they can go rent space somewhere else in, in, in Yankton, or they can completely shut down the WIC program. I don't think that it's in our best interest for them to shut down the WIC program in Yankton County. So therefore I feel that it's important that we rent this space to state for the, their WIC program. I just wanna make sure that we're all in agreement that we're getting the best bang for our buck using this, the space that we have in the facility. Where with the, with the four H, I'm not, I don't, I don't wanna discard that either, but we're not getting the best buck bang for our buck with utilizing that facility at the expenditure, the, the, the taxpayer's expense. Any further discussion? All in favor for the motion that is on the, on the floor right now? Which would be the one-year agreement to rent the facility, space facility below in our basement at two thousand dollars per month instead of fifteen hundred. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. So I will have Rob or Tyler, probably Tyler, rewrite the, the lease agreement that the state has proposed to us to include these two items. And send that back to the state. At this time, we have our end-of-the-year public comment. Anyone have anything to comment?
I want to say thank you guys, doing what you're doing, each and every one of you, and too, Patty, for doing the jobs that you're doing. I've been going through this with you. Wow, I'm glad I don't have to do it. So, just wanna thank you guys, say Happy New Year and good Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you, same to you.
And at this time, is there any commission updates?
I'd, I'd, uh, attended, I'm on, uh, uh, Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health Board and, and I'd, I'd let you know that the hospital is proceeding, uh, maybe even a little bit ahead of schedule.
I, I notice that every day I drive by there.
Could open, uh, maybe a couple of weeks early, which is unusual in today's.
Might be due to the weather. No snow.
Oh, no, it definitely does, definitely has. But we also had, I think, an exceptional county director.
Did you wanna go, Wanda, or do you need to go? Uh, I guess again, what I'll, I'll have is the, the letter we got from the Department of Corrections, uh, it was pretty interesting, uh, we got a, a letter, a sheriff sent out where the, again, the state wanted the counties to absorb all the expenses for medical, uh, for their parolees, um, uh, luckily our sheriff, our sheriffs kinda got together and, um, stopped that, but again, that's an example of, uh, trying to push more costs on to us, similar to with the VSOs. So those are the things we will have to watch for. Um, what else I got, uh, committee assignments, I think for next year, I should probably all start thinking about. I had, I was thinking about that and would propose we look at having, uh, two commissioners on for each, each assignment, I think that would help for a variety of reasons, it would give, first off, it would give more opportunities and, uh, it's just something to consider, um, for the assignments for next year.
And we'll do that in January.
Yep, and then.
Is that the first meeting normally?
I, I think that would help for, um, just a variety of reasons, like Don had mentioned, even, even budgeting, just to make sure, um, if, and, and I think a good example of how that works well is the highway department. Um, you get two people there explaining, you know, we need to do this for this reason, sometimes when it's one, you know, the person either can't make a meeting or whatnot, so be something to just think about. And then modify the high, five-year plan, uh, do we still wanna do that the first?
Yes, let me take a look at that, yes.
That's all I have.
Aren't we making our list for the first meeting then?
Yep.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll modify or we'll, we'll have the five-year plan, we'll be on that.
And then I'd, I'd like.
Mr. Media and Mike will bring that.
I'd like a, a final decision on how we're gonna approach the cuts to the Veteran Service Officer Department as well, just, uh, I think we're all in agreement that, uh, Yankton County vets first and others by appointment.
Uh, that should be on our, our, on the, on the agenda.
I thought it was out of county by appointment.
Yeah, yeah.
We just, we didn't need to make.
Exactly, right. Yankton County people can show up whenever.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I think we need to just prioritize, you know, the state has put us in charge of Yankton County, and that's gotta be our first assignment, and then we help others as, as we can.
You want that on the agenda for the next meeting, or do you wanna do that, make that motion now?
I don't think we can now, cause it's not on the agenda.
Oh, that's right, it's done, okay.
But, but on the next, I think we're all in agreeance with that, so. That's all I have.
Ryan, you got anything going on?
Uh, I don't have any update for this one.
Yep.
Wanda?
Just continuing to think about juveniles.
Yep.
And how to reduce the cost of indigent legal defense.
Are we still the only state that, that's a hundred percent the cost of the county? That, I believe we're the only state that, that is the case, so. Which, is it Pennsylvania, the other one? But then the counties get sales tax for that, so.
I, I suggest that we might consider a- asking Tom Standage to come and, and, uh, uh, explain to us how the recent changes, uh, were, uh, a, a small advantage to the county of the building.
How they do what?
The changes that they made in the building processes.
Oh.
For, for Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health?
Yes.
Okay, I think that'd be a good idea. Give us an update on the facility too, insurance here, I think that's great for the community to hear that.
Maybe, maybe he'll give a tour when it's done.
He'd be more than happy to take you on a tour tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's amazing what, you know, what's in that building.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to adjourn unless there's something else.
I have a motion on the floor to adjourn, by Dan, second by Ryan. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Like to just thank all the employees and everything for their hard work this year, too, so.